The swearing in of councilors Kathy Downs and Edward Rankin Jr. If you will join me down here, please. We're going to do it at the same time when I ask you to state your name, do it individually. And right hand, I state your name.
Kathy Downs.
Edward Rankin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Will obey the laws.
Will obey the laws.
Of the United States and of the State of Maine.
Of the United States and of the State of Maine.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
Duties of the office of Town Council member.
Duties of the office of Town Council member.
For the Town of Bucksport.
For the Town of Bucksport.
Congratulations. Next on the agenda is roll call. Mark Eastman.
Here.
Jim Morrison.
Yes.
Paul Bissonette.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Dan Ormsby.
Here.
Kathy Downs.
Here.
Edward Rankin Jr.
Here.
Next is annual actions of the council. First is the election of mayor. We'll open up nominations.
I'd like to nominate Peter Stewart.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? And we'll close the nominations. All in favor of Peter Stewart? It's unanimous. Sitting in the right spot?
We'll see. Next item is the election of a deputy mayor for the first time. I'll open up for nominations. I'll nominate Paul Bissonette.
I'll second it.
We have a nomination as second for Paul Bissonette. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close it. All those in favor for Paul? Congratulations. Committee assignment discussion, the next item.
Each of you should, between now and the next council meeting, submit to Mayor Stewart the committees that you're interested in serving on. There are the four regular committees, and then economic development is the fifth one that councils can also serve on, and he will put those together and then send out a draft to everybody about, hopefully everybody gets the committees that they are interested in serving on, but, so that we can start committee meetings after that, at that next meeting. Any questions?
Any questions around that? Item five is presentation of any town council recognitions, if we have any. Item six, consider minutes of previous meetings. We have town council minutes from twelve, twelve, nineteen, and finance committee minutes from twelve, twelve, nineteen. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to second from the council. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Seven is receiver review correspondence. We have a Olin police call on twelve, twenty-seven, nineteen, a Verona police call on twelve, sixteen, nineteen, another Verona police call on twelve, nine, nineteen. Anything about those chief? Just regular calls and backups?
Backup calls.
Okay. Item D was Down East Transportation Ridership Report for November twenty nineteen. We've had a lot of riders during that month here on that one. And item E is a thank you from Zach Erickson for Eagle Skull Project. If you remember, he was here a while back and asked for approval to do his project. I have not been out there.
He redid a campsite.
Yeah.
Out on the trails and did a very nice job.
Nice.
With it.
Any comments on any of those outside? Ordances to consider. We have a second reading for the fee ordinance and amendment to within the entire fees. We will have a public hearing on both of these later on tonight. Any action we can discuss at the public hearing on that? The second one is a second reading for the amendment to streets and roads ordinance related to parking at the Marina parking lot.
That one does not have a public hearing later. This is, this second reading.
Had some changes.
Some changes. At the last meeting, there was a discussion of having three spaces along the side as you go down into the Marina parking lot, three spaces on that side, and that, this draft reflects that, that would be open for the public with one handicap parking space, and since that time, our community and economic development director and our harbor master, Marina manager have come up with another proposal which creates four spaces along that side as public with one of them being handicapped access in order to allow for the, that second space which is required in the handicapped access with a single space for, in case it was a van or whatever. And Rich has a drawing of the, of what that would look like, but it's, it's basically the, the spaces on that left side would be, as you go down, would be public spaces, including a handicap space, and the ones to the right would be Marina, front and back, during that as a...
And that satisfies what you guys were looking for, or?
Yeah, the, the spaces across the, directly across from the Marina building.
Yeah.
In the back, those would be Marina. Parking up against the Marina will be Marina, and the ones on the side on the left that are charred spaces will be public.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. So we'll have a public hearing on that next meeting?
There would be a public hearing on that next meeting.
Any discussion on that, or?
What were the dates excluding?
The public parking, the way I understand it, would follow regular public parking rules, correct? It would be, oh, no overnight parking during the winter, but regular, regular parking during the summertime or when there's no winter restrictions. Is that the way we understand it?
Say that again.
Regular parking rules would apply to those spots that are public?
Yeah, for the public, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And the Marina rules would be overnight parking for as long as they're there?
They will also, and we can, if we have to, we can come up with a tag system that something could be hung in the window, something, you know, so that the police officers would know. I know what they all are, but these guys, they went down there.
Okay.
We can do that, and that way everyone's aware who's what.
Okay.
And that leaves three or four spaces open for public, and, and the handicaps, so if somebody going into the lighthouse can park down there and wheel themselves up.
Okay.
The other thing is that the, I thought that Council Rankin was referring, is that this limitation would be June one to, to September thirtieth.
To September thirtieth.
And not year round.
Right.
That, it would be open.
So outside of those times, it's, it's open to public parking?
That's correct.
A lot of those spaces are gone in the winter anyway, for the dogs, but, yeah.
Yeah. But the, the, that left side would be.
That's open.
Would, is always open, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Discussion items. First item is Main Street Bucksport update. Is Brooke here? Brooke is here.
I'm Brooke Minner with Main Street Bucksport. Thank you for having us. I, over the past several years, we presented a year-end report to the council, and we decided just to wait to the first meeting of 2020, so the new councilors were here. Good to see you. Just to talk about what we've done over the past year and what we're looking forward to coming forward. You have a sort of abbreviated version of our 2019 activities in your packet. I brought some hard copies that I'll leave if people want to take them. This is available on our website and Facebook page as well. So, I won't go into tons of detail, but we kind of broke down our activities into three basic categories in this last year, which was working for and with downtown businesses, bringing people downtown and working on our organization as a really new nonprofit and trying to find ways to grow and be sustainable. When it comes to the work that we did with businesses downtown, lots of good stuff was happening in the last year. We continue to host our monthly coffee hour, which happens tomorrow, eight AM. Everyone's invited. Tomorrow morning, it's at Verona Wine and Design, and that's nice of Mike and Colleen to host us. That's just an agenda-free monthly meeting for anyone who's interested in what's happening in the downtown, to come together and talk and sort of cheer each other on and share ideas. There's been some really great collaborative work that has grown out of that meeting over the last few years. We also were the coordinators for a brochure that promoted our downtown businesses. Those were distributed to all the main turnpike visitor centers throughout the state, and that was an idea that came from several downtown business owners who wanted to see that happen, and we were able to just help with some organizing. We launched a new website, thanks to a nice grant from Maine Community Foundation. The website is up and running, still growing, and still a little bit of a work in progress, but getting there for sure. We were fortunate to use Scott Rowley, who's here behind me, who's a newish business owner in town who does website and print design work, in order to do that, and the website itself provides a free business listing for all of the downtown businesses. We've almost populated them all close. There's a couple other things listed there. Obviously, we had a lot of downtown events last year. We did sixteen events downtown. Some were very big and some were small. Those are listed for you there, and by our count, they brought about forty-six hundred people to the downtown. And then, of course, we worked on the organization's future and sustainability itself. We were very fortunate to adopt our first-ever strategic plan last year, which I shared with most of you a couple of months ago. There's a kind of abbreviated version of that in your packet. We feel really good about that, and it provides us a pretty solid roadmap for the next few years, and so the implementation of that is underway. And, you know, website visitors and Facebook followers and all that continues to grow, although we're still relatively new. So, going ahead a little bit, looking at our budget from last year, we were very fortunate to be able to leverage the public funding that we received from the town, which was $20,000 to raise $15,700 in grant funds. Our goal for the year was $10,000, so we were really pleased with that. We raised just shy of $16,000 in event income and just over $8,000 in general donations. So that's sort of our funding model and how we're generally paying for our operations. All of that work was made possible by over two-hundred-and-fifty volunteer hours, and we rely really heavily on volunteers, board members, but also lots of other community members who come out and help us with our events and other sorts of things. And also, that work is made possible by the many collaborations that we have throughout the community. Last year, by my count, we collaborated with twelve different community organizations in Bucksport. I hope I got everyone. And, you know, always looking to grow that. It's a real way to maximize the impact of our work and connect with new people. And then finally, as we're looking ahead to this year, we have two pretty significant projects that we received grants for in late 2019 that we'll be working on in 2020. The first is a museum in the streets project that we're doing with the Bucksport Historical Society. Museum in the Streets, you might know it or have seen it in other communities. It's actually a Maine-based company, although it exists all over the world. It's a self-guided walking tour that highlights historical places or events. The signs themselves use images from the historical society's collection, which is a nice way to kind of keep their collection out and living when the place itself is closed in the off-season. That grant was partially funded. We've been working with the historical society for several months to complete the funding gap, and we're getting there. But we're hopeful that that will break ground in the spring or early summer of this coming year. That was also based on some of the ideas that had come out of the Heart and Soul project around highlighting and honoring local history.
So is that, is that a summer-long project then, or?
Well, it's a permanent project ultimately, yeah. So this would be one large sign, probably near the waterfront, that would highlight the walking tour itself and have kind of a short history of the community, and then fifteen smaller signs throughout the kind of compact walking village district. So ideally, they would be, the historical society themselves is working now to identify those sites, pick items that will highlight interesting stories. The signs ideally would be installed in early summer. A lot of towns around here have them. Belfast has a really great one, Halliwell and others that I've seen, but, and then we also received a second grant quite late last year to expand the public art project with additional murals. We had paid for ourselves a mural during, that was launched at the Arts Festival two years ago, but again, in response to a lot of the feedback that came both from the Adapt Plan and the Heart and Soul Plan, public art seems to be something that people want and we would like to see. So we received funding for approximately four more kind of large-scale murals. It sort of depends on the scope and size, and we're working now to put together a committee that will help to find those artists, and we're also working with property owners downtown who are interested in having a mural either painted directly on their building or installed in some kind of a less permanent way. So those are projects coming up. We have joined forces more formally, which you might have heard. With Wednesdays on Main, we've always been a partner with them and have helped Paula in that work. This year, we have a more formal partnership. We're serving as their community partner in helping Paula to do some fundraising, to do some additional volunteer recruitment and management, essentially in the hopes that that project continues on and that it's not reliant on one person. It's been a huge amount of work, and kudos to her for doing that. So we're hoping to just provide some organizational support to ensure some sustainability for that. So that's kind of the short version. There's some pictures of some of the things that we've done over the years, and again, a very abbreviated version of our kind of high-level goals for the strategic plan, which will take us through our next three years. But I'm happy to, to take questions or.
Any questions?
Your comments.
What, what number of volunteers do you presently have?
I think our current number of volunteers is in the seventy to eighty range.
Is, is that up or down from your original?
Oh, up. I mean, it's up, it's up every year, yeah. And some of those people do one thing, you know, like there's this wonderful couple, they're, they moved here three or four years ago, and they always volunteer at the race, and they love it, and they're great. And every year, they sort of take on more and more responsibility, and that's all they do, and that's what they want to do. You know, so it kind of varies. That is from people who do that kind of one-time thing to board members and other folks who are much more actively.
How many are you board?
Seven at the moment, although we have a meeting next week, which is our annual meeting where we elect new members and officers, and I expect we'll have two new members joining at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? One, one quick question.
Yeah.
On the, on the race, how long do you shut the bridge down?
It's usually about.
And the reason I ask is that's the same day as Main Maritime's graduation?
Oh, yeah. I'd say it's about ten minutes.
Okay.
So it's funny, because the only rule for the race is that you must run until you get across the bridge, and then you can walk.
Okay.
And some people do, and that's fine. But yeah, I'd say eight to ten minutes.
And that starts at nine?
Starts at ten.
Ten.
What time is graduation?
Eleven, so.
So we can talk, too, because if you think it will pose, I mean, you know.
Ten minutes is probably not going to, people will be there. I just, I didn't know.
It's pretty fast. The race, the, the starting line, although we sort of say it starts at the fort, because people get dropped off or whatever there, it's actually.
Right at the end of the bridge.
Basically at the end of the bridge, and we do kind of announcements and have the national anthem, and then go.
That should be fine. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Yes. Have your fundraising efforts elevated? Have you?
Yeah, they have.
The grants and all, but are the people interested in coming and donating to the fund?
Yeah, so, I mean, our, our event income has sort of slowly ticked up year to year, and I actually would be happy to share with you all our, you know, year-over-year budget. It's also on our website, so you can see that. We have not technically budgeted for like an annual fund, just kind of sending out and asking people for donations, but we launched a very, very small one last year, built on that a little bit this year, and it came in just under a thousand dollars this year, which was about two-hundred more than last. Those kinds of things are really slow to build, so that's, seems pretty okay and typical to me. Our income generally has been pretty consistent over the last three years, and we've really only been, well, we got our nonprofit status in December of 2015, so, yeah. Four years that we've been kind of official and three years that we've had any staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thanks, Brooke.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave some of this other stuff to add on the table.
Thank you. Next item is program for assisting residents housing repairs, et cetera. Councilor Morrison.
Hi, how you doing?
Hey.
I have an interest in seeing that people, there's a lot of wanting to build housing to bring people into housing, elderly people that are having a little bit of trouble thriving in place and need to get, a lot of people are interested in staying in their homes. They, they were born, raised there. Some of them, some of them have lived there all their married lives, and they'd like to stay there. It's to the point now where with the limited incomes that, that they're allowing the elderly now, I think it'd be a good idea if we started looking into as many ways as possible to start funding and helping those people with their repairs and needs at their homes.
Okay.
Councilor Morrison and I discussed this earlier, and there are, there are programs that are formerly where the town could apply for these housing repair and rehab grants, and that's no longer possible. The state community development department no longer funds those locally. They fund them regionally, and the regional organization is in Ellsworth that does this, and now, but money is available through that, but I'm in hopes that we can refer this subject through committee to find ways to assist people, connect them correctly with the things that, the money that's out there that we can't apply for on our own, but if we can help people access what Bucksport's fair share of that would be one big one. And the other piece that Council Morrison and I talked about was just the difficulty in, in people getting these, some of these fairly small jobs done, you know, that a volunteer bank, people who would be willing to help out neighbors, et cetera, is another.
Yeah, a little bit of weather stripping around somebody's door would make a big difference, you know, and make them happy. There is a, an, a, an organization called Neighbor for Neighbor that's, it's down in Ellsworth, and I'm going to get down and approach them and see how they are set up, because I believe that a lot of their money is not government fund money. It's, it's volunteer people are donating to them, and they, they were on the news the other night.
It was Healthy Acadia, and, and that was the, I think that's the overarching group that it's under, and.
Healthy Acadia.
Healthy Acadia. And I happened to notice that there were several groups from Bucksport that are members of that organization that, that we as a council give money to, to assist. And I'm wondering if you don't mind looking at that, seeing if that's someplace we direct our money someplace else, if we're giving money to three different places to try to fix an, an issue that we've got to look at.
Yeah.
I'd be kind of curious where, where the money that, that we give to these organizations, how they're supporting that, that, that function, to see where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, the need for somebody to tighten up the doorknob on the door or, or to put a little weather stripping around or something. If you go to a government grant program and try to get some money out of them, by the time you're done, they're, they're going to be on retirement.
But you're right, I, I did notice that on, on the news the other night, too, and I looked into it, and I noticed that we had several organizations that are, that are town organizations that are, belong to that, so. Anything else? Yes, John?
John Paul Alon, Bucksport. Jim, there's an organization on Blue Hope Peninsula, and I know they tried to get a college chapter in Bucksport called Window Dressers, and so it's a, it's making indoor storm windows. It has had a big effect on saving on energy and, you know, the draft. They did one project for Bucksport at Gardner Commons, and, and we made twenty-four windows for that, and residents really, really appreciate that. So that may be, you know, another thing that you might want to look at, is, you know, finding out more about the window dressers and having a chapter of that in Bucksport.
Yeah, thanks.
I will.
Anything else? Thank you, Jim. Pool update.
We have a letter from Carpenter Associates, who is associated with the BHNA, the company that was selected to look at options for the pool, and the question that was put to them was in regard to the idea of whether the pool as it, as it exists could be rehabbed and, in a quicker and less expensive timeframe than a new installation. And questions arose during that discussion of ADA requirements, and this letter answers that, which basically says that whether you call it a rehab or you build new, to the extent that it's necessary to do something to this pool, it, it needs to be ADA compliant. And that also, that due to the extent of, of trying to determine if you were going to do a rehab, where the breaks are, that in either case requires an excavation of the existing pool, and the, the difference ends up being what you replace it with when you put it back, whether that's something similar to what it is now, an asphalt-based or a concrete. There is a meeting on January seventeenth of that, the committee that's looking this, to go over this letter, get a few more details, and, and come back to the council with the recommendation for moving forward. But I just got this letter today, so this is.
What is a, what is a, if you know, what's a, what's a timeline for, if we, if we go with either one of these options, is it where the pool's going to be opened? Do we know?
The goal of this initially is by July one.
And the pool normally opens, what, June twentieth or something like that, right? Any questions, comments? Next item, agenda items. We have resolved 2020-36 to approve the sewer interest rate for 2020.
The state sets an interest rate that the town is allowed to charge up to annually for tax and sewer for, who are, that are paid. annually for tax and sewer for, who are, that are paid late. Back in 2015, the council, um, the rate was 7% and the council at that time, uh, reduced that to 4% because of the mill had closed, et cetera, et cetera. And we have maintained it at 4% every year. The allowable interest rate is now 8% at the state, but I'm still recommending that we keep it at 4% to, um, make it as least onerous as possible, but not to create a situation where it's, there is no penalty for, um.
How would the council like to go?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to second. Anything from the coun- uh, from the town on this, from the public? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Um, next item is appointments to the solar committee. We have Isaac Bray and we also would like to have two counselors.
That's new, brand-new counselors right here on the table.
I, I, did you, did you? Okay, um, well, I, you, you wanna do it, Mark? Okay. Um, if anybody else wants, they can send myself or, or Jacob or Sue an email, please, um, sometime before the next week is out, so we can get that committee going.
Yes, we would like to schedule, I, further down here, I'd like to get that going. There's, we're getting a lot of requests from some of these companies.
Yep.
In regard to whether or not the town is interested in the landfill being, um, utilized as a site for this. And we still have the question of, um, zoning to answer in regard to this as well, so.
And we'll be meant to make any movement for Isaac Bray or it's just an automatic appointment?
Well, you voted for the rest of them.
Right. Yep, yep.
Make a motion to appoint?
Yeah, motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Um, no quit claims or deeds. Town manager report, Adam 13.
Um, first, I want to thank all of our law enforcement officers and dispatchers for their efforts on our behalf. Today is National Law Enforcement, um, Day, Appreciation Day. The work done by these professionals on a daily basis on our behalf gets more complicated and more dangerous by the day and we are fortunate to have the well-trained and professional staff that we do, so thank you, chief and all your.
Thanks, chief.
Members. I have been asked to serve on the State Public Transportation Advisory Committee. This committee meets four times a year and I can participate via Zoom so that it would not require travel out of the office. The first meeting is on Friday, January 17th, which wouldn't interfere with anything anyway. I'm honored to be asked and think that this will benefit, um, the community because we are looking to improve public transportation options in this region for, um, rural communities. I received that request from the DOT yesterday for participation. The employee Christmas luncheon was a big success this year. I'm happy to report that we had the largest participation by employees in at least the last five years and it, it is designed as a thank you to our employees and it was greatly appreciated by all of them. I've convened a meeting of the former partners of the Thriving in Place program for January 16th. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss ways that the goals of that program can be met through greater collaboration without a staff person. A representative of the State Public Health Nursing Program will be present to discuss how their organization may help to fill the coordinator role. RSU 25 is applying for a grant for lighting at the soccer field. The town owns the soccer field, but this addition will greatly increase the field's ability to be used. Our community and economic development director, Rich Rotella, has submitted a grant application to MDOT for $550,000 for wall replacement in the downtown area. If approved, the funding would be available in this 2020 year. We had initially thought in applying for this grant that the funding would not be available till 2021. Rich was notified today that that funding would be available in 2020, so we could actually start that wall replacement program in this, um, year. And the walls I'm talking about are the deteriorating retaining walls that are throughout the downtown. An offer's been made to a person for the firefighter EMT position created by Deputy Chief Mike Dunning, switching to a day shift. The start date for the person is January 20th and the police side is in the process of interviewing for the sergeant position. Terry Doty is the new executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. That was announced very recently. She will beginning, uh, be beginning shortly. We also were notified that we, that the town had unclaimed property, the state unclaimed property site and I, um.
A million dollars?
No. No, less than a thousand, but it was three checks. Two were cashier's checks, um, made out to the, in the name of the town, purchased in the name of the town at a, at the local credit union that apparently never made their way to us because they're, they're, have been sent, they were sent to the state, but they're coming back to us and one ambulance payment from Anthem. I have no idea why that didn't come to us, but that's, so those three checks, it's slightly less than a thousand dollars, but it's a thousand dollars that might as well be in our pocket as, um, anyone else's. And finally, I just wanna report on the, the change in hours and the, in the, um, 33 days since the, the hours were changed, we've had 178 people take advantage of the hours before 8:00 and after 4:30. We, we're tracking that, um, and will continue to do so that we, so that we have hard numbers to look at when we review this, but.
Thanks. Rich, where'd he go? I just didn't know if he wanted to, if he had anything under the, I knew we had some stuff, I didn't know if we wanted to do it under this or, or do we wanna wait and he can do his under other stuff?
He usually does it under.
All right, um, item 14 is public hearings. First one we have is amended, amendment to council rules to add sections 44 and 45 to define process for appointment of councilor to an expired term and to establish when such counselors would be seated. Open the public hearing? Any comments? Everybody understands what we're talking about? Everybody's read the credit thing? Hearing no comments? I'll close the public hearing. Do you vote on that one now or?
Yes.
Yeah. I get, I get lost and, I get lost in.
Motion approved?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Anything, uh, we already had everything. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Yeah, too late. The second one is amendment to fees ordinance transfer station automotive waste to eliminate the fees for the disposal of tires. Open the public hearing? Any comments?
So this, uh, this tire fee, uh, well, I, I couldn't, I didn't, I couldn't find that online where the, uh, where it was amended, but.
Let me.
It's supposed to go away.
It is.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, right, right now it hadn't been changed because we had to go through this public hearing.
Right, yes, yes, I understand.
Yep, but once it does, then it'll revert to what we're talking about.
Okay, all right, so I'm good to go.
Anything else? Hearing done? Close the public hearing?
Motion approved, second.
Have a motion to second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Get back to where I was here. Discussion items not on the agenda for public input. We'll open up to the public first.
Good evening, uh, Rich Rotella, Community and Economic Development. Uh, just wanna let the folks of Bucksport know, uh, if you qualify for the property tax relief payment, uh, our checks for the town of Bucksport were sent out today, they're in amount of a hundred and four dollars. Those are real checks, so please keep an eye on, on those. Um, I received notification today from Charter that the make-ready poll applications are running behind because they are waiting on utility companies and they asked for an extension. The new construction completion date is June 23rd, 2020. Uh, the request was approved this afternoon by ConnectMe, so that's the grant that we got for Millvale and Bucks Mills. I completed the grant request to the MDOT for the MPI grant for the walls and requested 550,000 as our town manager has stated. It was for FY '21. The MDOT, uh, called and said that there was leftover monies and they, if we wanted, would apply that to FY '20 and I asked them to do that for us. We should find out by the end of this month or in February if we receive that grant. I have engaged the engineer for the diesel project as part of the MDOT ship grant that we were awarded. Uh, the meeting will be next Friday morning at the Marina. The harbor master and myself will be in attendance. Uh, with the assistance of the Economic Development Committee, I have completed the RFP for marketing services for the town. The RFP will be posted on Monday and is requesting the plan to include the following components: goals, strategies, branding, target markets, associated costs to implement the plan, and effective measurement metrics. I will be requesting up to $10,000 to hire the most qualified firm. I will be hosting a save the meeting, uh, save the hall meeting here on Monday, January 13th with, uh, Richard Bowden and other members of the American Legion Hall. The Legion Hall needs many improvements and working with the Home Depot grant project, um, that we've been working on for seven, eight months now. That grant goes a long way to accomplishing what is needed, but there are parts of the project that their staff cannot do and that's, uh, because they're not licensed electricians or heating specialists. I am urging and requesting anyone who is interested in helping coming up with ways to save the American Legion Hall to meet with us next Monday here at 5pm. I'm working on a $170,000 grant through the Maine Development Foundation and for Maine to assist with the Dead River property to assess the, uh, techno-economic feasibility of locating biofine technology, um, uh, adjacent to the oil blending and storage facility here in Bucksport, see if that's gonna be feasible. If you remember, they got an, uh, MTI grant earlier this year. As the town manager mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce has hired Terry Doty to be its next, uh, executive director and she will start on Monday. And as Brooke mentioned earlier, Main Street, Bucksport will be hosting its second Friday coffee half hour at Verona Wine and Design tomorrow 8am.
Where, where, where does, um, Main 200 stand?
Uh, yes, uh, Main 200, um, we met again this morning. We meet every Thursday. Uh, we started meeting, um, at the Marina this fall. Our title sponsor, uh, is in place. That happened yesterday afternoon, uh, and a formal announcement will be going out shortly. I'm pleased to say in the eight months in the fundraising and the grant world that, uh, we're well over six figures. Um, so, uh, we will be, uh, going to towns as well to seek support, um, but, uh, we, uh, at this point have been guaranteed, uh, the schooner Bowden from, uh, the Maine Maritime Academy as well as the Charm. Uh, we have two other tall ships, uh, that, uh, Jack Ives, who owns the Charm, believes will be coming as well. The Harbor Master and Jack are working on a plan so that they can, um, how would you know? Wrapped up against each other. And, uh, in February, uh, someone from the board's going to be heading down to the American Schooner Association meeting. Uh, there are 72 schooners in or around Maine, uh, that we'd like to have them come up here as well. We wanna fill the harbor. The event will start on the 9th. It will be held in, it's a little bit of a change. It's gonna actually start in Bangor because on the 10th, there's a major concert that's gonna be happening that hasn't been announced yet to the public. Brewer at Chinbro will have it on the 10th. Bucksport will get two days, the 11th and 12th, which are now the new days of the Bay Festival. Uh, the 13th, uh, and 14th will be CSport. Castine will be, uh, hosting, uh, the Steel Day the 14th as well. So, uh, it's gained a lot of traction and a lot of, uh, press and is, uh, very well-received in Augusta.
Thanks. Anything else for Rich while he's standing here? All right, thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Um, any, anything from the public? Anything on the agenda? Anything from the council? All right. Committee assignments, committee meetings, um, cemetery committee meeting dates, are these normally held off council times or during, on council nights or?
No, the cent, the cemetery committee meeting would not be, uh.
Council night?
That's not one of your regular council committees. Um, this is some.
Are you on that, Mark?
Yeah, I was.
And you're, and you're, and you wanted to be on it?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys wanna, you have a preference for a date or time?
I mean, I, we're planning to do about it, you know, daytime, that's what.
Yep, in the afternoon.
Sure. And I can reach out to, well, are we gonna appoint new people?
Well, they, you have Tim, you have the two of you and there's, as I said, upstairs, I have names of two people who, who don't necessarily need to be on the committee but have a lot of interest in this that, um, wanna help. Is the best word to phrase it?
Yep.
Because I think that if Henry's going to, and Tim does and.
Bob Briggs, I think is, you know, he'd still have interest as far as I could see.
Yeah. Okay, that we can, is there a, someday that's better than?
So if, how about, how about the Wednesday before the next council meeting? You know, council meeting on Thursday, the.
I can do that, I just need to do it for, you know, like 1 o'clock, something like that. Can't do too late if I can.
Yeah, 1 o'clock is fine.
1 o'clock on the?
22nd, is it? Is that Wednesday?
Yep.
23rd, next council meeting.
22nd.
22nd. So what we say, the cemetery meeting, Wednesday, the 22nd, 1pm here?
Yep, and I give hour, we'll do it an hour, Kathy?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, I will, um.
Can you notify the other folks?
I'll notify everybody, but also give you all the information that I have that we've put together on the issue.
Okay.
Without being, no, it's, uh, you know, it's a private, it's private property, it's has veterans' graves prior to 1880. It, the stones aren't there anymore, we're.
Do you wanna reach out to the property owner?
The property owner, yeah.
I know one of them's local, I think one's in Florida and I don't know the other.
Okay.
Absolutely, because the, part of what the town's responsibility is relates to what the property owner is willing to do as well, so.
Okay.
Will everybody notified for this, for the 22nd at 1?
All right. Um, solar committee, meeting date? Again, that's a off, off, um, council meeting?
Um, I'm trying to think it during the, what I can do is reach out, if you, if you don't have, uh, an objection, I'll reach out to the members that have indicated an interest and come, put a comment date and get it posted and.
That work?
Out there, um, within the next two weeks.
Two weeks, yep, okay. Cause this is a brand-new committee also, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Uh, one of the other ones, um, the, the, um, the item that, that Jim brought up, um, I was trying to figure out, is that economic development or is that infrastructure?
Services. I would think it would fall under services. I, I mean, we're.
Trying to, you're providing service.
Providing, you know, finding ways to assist the residents, I would think, might be services.
Do we, can we set that one up?
Soon as there's a committee.
Yeah, I, I think we can have the committee, we can set, we can set the meeting date before the next council, um, and then we can, we'll, we'll go at 6 o'clock, since everybody's here fairly early anyway, so. And then once we get that committee set, we'll, we'll have that, we'll have that. If, if I could get your committee assignments by, you know, first of next week, I know we, we can get them set up and see where we're at. Goals and objectives meeting, um, what I would like to do on this is take an off council night, um, like the Thursday, the 30th maybe. That, that's a Thursday night, but it's not a council night. And if we can, we can get here at 6 o'clock. Yep. Plan for a couple hours and see where we go from there. Does that work for you, Sue?
Yeah, I was gonna ask for an off council night and. Yeah, I was going to ask for an off council night in either our, an evening or a Saturday morning, uh, as you've all received in your email, the packet that talks about the, or that provides you with the five planning documents that you've done, that the council has adopted since two thousand and seventeen, ADAPT, AARP, the comprehensive plan, Heart and Soul. We have another one.
Next.
Hmm?
Bucksport next?
Well, no, it's not Bucksport next.
Comprehensive, comprehensive plan, AARP.
Oh, economic development plan is the fifth one. And every one of those plans has a goal section in them. And the town has, and many, many volunteers and many residents have spent time, effort, energy, and the town has spent money on all, all of these. And I, I think that if, I, I'm encouraging the council to look at these and pick out from those plans how we form moving forward before we start looking at more things. We've got five very comprehensive...
And that's going to drive our budget conversations coming up also, once we determine where we want to be and where we want to go, so. Everybody good on the thirtieth, six o'clock? That's in between council meetings, so we'll go with that, if that works for you also?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Item seventeen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Congratulations, guys.